Welcome to our October tenth candidates forum. We are going to uh have three panels today for Oakland City Council Districts five, seven, and at large respectively. And um we have a really tight schedule, so I don't want to take too much time. And what I will do is first, um if we can go to the next slide, is do a land acknowledgement. Um we gather tonight, we must acknowledge indigenous people as the stewards of this land on which we live and build. The East Bay is the unceded territory, territory of the Lishan Aloney people. As we work against the displacement of the people in our community, we recognize and name the histories of displacement. Of the communities that existed here before us, we want to uplift the work of our lonely neighbors to create spaces of belonging, opposing the process of paying Schumi a voluntary land tax that's that supports the work of the Segurite Land Trust, which returns a lonely land to a lonely people and encourage you all to do the same. Um so we're gonna go to the next slide, which is a slide of our partners for tonight's event. Alameda County Community Food Bank, Saint Mary Center, Legal Women Voters, and Centro Legal de la Raza. Um we're partners in putting today's event together. We thank them for for the work that they did. Next slide. We are EPO East Bay Housing Organizations. Uh we are a membership-based organization working on housing, affordable housing issues, um production, preservation, and protection in the East Bay. And it is actually membership season for us, so it's a great time to join for twenty twenty-five or renew your membership. This is a open and free event to the public, but we also have a lot of great events uh that happen from um exclusively for our members and um you can see the QR code on the screen and the website website link as well as a photo of staff. Um and we welcome you to go visit our website and to consider joining. You can join for uh I think as low as like five dollars if you're a resident of affordable housing. Next slide. Uh we are really excited about our twenty twenty-four Election Hub page put together by our membership team. This has some great resources for you, including what's on the ballot. Um candidate questionnaire. So in addition to hearing from candidates directly, we did send questionnaires to candidates in various um seats, both in Oakland, uh Alameda County and Contra Costa County. So uh those who return their questionnaires, they're up on the website and it it asks different questions than we're asking tonight, but also related to housing and housing policy. So you can dive even deeper and learn about where the candidates stand on different housing positions. In addition to that, there is some information about what's on your ballot. And uh after uh this event is over, we will be putting up the video for this forum um on that page as well. So there's a lot of great resources on that page open uh for all of you to to look at. Next slide. One of the things that we are supporting this year on the ballot is yes, uh on Prop five. Uh this specifically lowers the voter threshold so that initiatives that come you once we pass Prop five, um initiatives that come forward and are being placed on the ballot only have to have a fifty-five percent um approval from voters and it's an opportunity for housing initiatives to have a chance at passing on the ballot. You can find out more on yesonpropfive.org. Next slide. Another free and open to the public event is our Lunch and Learn series where we pick a topic each month. Um and for an hour uh around uh um the lunch hour, we we have guest speakers and um an opportunity for us to expand our learning and knowledge. Uh October twenty-fourth, we're gonna be talking about TOPA. Um specifically also with like what's happening in Berkeley and like how how that can be a powerful tool for affordable housing elsewhere. November twenty-first um ending East Bay homelessness, focusing on real solutions. And then December nineteenth, goodbye twenty twenty-four, hello twenty twenty-five, where we will look back and reflect and set some goals for twenty twenty-five. So you can rcp at bit.ly backslash EPO twenty twenty-four. Again, that is another free thing that's open to the public. Um next slide, I think that's our last slide. Oh yeah, you can keep up with that. These are our socials. Um you can sign up for EPO updates um or follow us on various social media platforms, including Facebook, Twitter, and X, no, Facebook, Instagram, and X. Um and yeah, we hope that um you will continue to engage in the work that we do moving forward. So now we're gonna jump into the panels. So we invited every candidate that was running for the seats um that we named today, uh and we gave uh them uh a form and some rules to abide by, including um sticking to the timeframe that they're given. Um including being courteous to one another and also giving me the permission to mute them if they go overtime. Um so we're really excited for the three panels we have today. We're gonna start off with District Five and our moderator for the District Five panel is um is Jeff Levin, who is the Senior uh Director of Policy uh at East Bay Housing Organizations. Whole thing about tonight, all the moderators are are EPO staff, so I'm very excited about that. So I'm gonna toss it over to Jeff, who's going to start us uh off with the first panel and we're also, I'm also gonna ask that um if you are a candidate, that means Aaron Armstrong, Noel Guyo, please go ahead and turn your cameras on so you can appear to us.
Great, thank you and welcome to our candidates. Uh we're gonna start with the first question. I just wanna note candidates will have one minute to answer each question, but one and a half minutes to introduce yourselves. And the questions will also be posted into the chat once they're asked, so you can go back and and see the question. Uh with that, let's start with introductions. Uh please introduce yourself and share why you are most qualified to be uh city council member. You have a minute and a half to answer and we will start with Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here uh to address this important organization. Uh so many of you I've worked with over the past several years as we have um been fighting regionally for uh the Bafa Regional Ballot Initiative. Um and so it's my pleasure to be here and and uh speak with you tonight. Uh so as I mentioned, my name is Aaron Armstrong. My wife and I moved to Oakland uh fifteen years ago and immediately fell in love with the people and the culture of the city. We knew that this was where we were gonna put down roots and grow our family. And we're so excited that today we're raising our three-year-old here in the city of Oakland. Uh and I, you know, I've gotta be honest, I wouldn't be running for city council if I felt that things were going well uh in especially in District Five. Uh for the last fifteen years that I've been here, the streets every year have gotten filthier. The neighborhood's less safe and the cost of living continues to increase over and over. And so I personally believe that we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. As the Senior Policy Advisor for Alameda County Supervisor Nate Miley, I've had an opportunity to tackle these challenging problems that are facing us to work on preventing homelessness with Measure W and building, preserving, and producing affordable housing with the Bafa Regional Bond. And I look forward to continuing that track record and fighting uh for Oaklanders and District Five residents.
Thank you. Uh let's turn now to Councilmember Guyo.
Can you, uh can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you and thanks for the opportunity to be able to speak with you. And certainly I've I have worked with many of you for many years and when it comes to affordable housing, uh certainly we've been in one of, in my district five, we've been in one of the leaders to create affordable housing, working with the Unity Council, the Native American Health Center, and uh certainly with many organizations from Saha, you 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 Balsi. Now, and we've been able to build over two thousand units of affordable housing and we continue, we're in the progress now uh with the Unity Council to acquire two, three prod uh um private properties to expand our housing and certainly the Native American Health Center up has now negotiated another property across the street from them to build affordable housing. So when it comes to, you know, trying to take care of our families here in the city, you know, we've been working together for many, many years. And for someone to come out and say that we haven't done anything is the fact is it's not about what you say, it's what you do. And certainly Alameda County needs to be more cooperative, responsive to the city of Oakland when it comes to dealing with uh not only our homeless population, but dealing with the safety and the conditions that we have in Oakland. And and so I look forward to expanding those relationship and working with you directly. But at the end of the day, we need to stay together and be able to request additional sources from the state of California, is from the county as well as from Thank you.
Uh our next question uh concerns the city budget. While most of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund does not come from the general fund, there is more that could be done with the general fund to ensure the three Ps are being prioritized in our budget, including a permanent budget item for tenant protection legal services. What is your approach to reaching a balanced budget? And how would you prioritize the three Ps, protection, preservation, and production as part of that? And we'll start with Councilmember Guyo.
Yes, uh certainly I know the numbers of the current situation we're in um and with the budget and we certainly not only need to prioritize, make sure we work with public safety, a clean city, but make sure that we take care of the end of our individuals that are on the street. Uh to make sure that the residents, our children and families are able to continue to grow as well as we we're able to take care of those that are in great need of housing. Uh and uh so I I do support and I have worked with my colleagues on the council that we need to make sure that we maintain the funding necessary to be able to address the building of affordable housing, to be able to enhance our NOFA's uh funding and demand more support from the state. So I I clearly know what the budget is and clearly that's one of my priorities to make sure that we take care of our our neighborhood streets, dealing with our homeless population and uh making sure our children and families have a productive life.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you for this question. Um I think it's really important to get a little bit of history and context to the current budget challenges that we're facing here in the city of Oakland. Uh in twenty twenty-two, the city received a large amount of funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funding, which was a one-time federal spend that was going to allow us to recover from the pandemic. At the county, we were able to invest that money directly into community and so much of it was able to go into things like production and preservation and making sure that we had uh services that that could address housing. The city used that funds to cover a structural budget deficit. And to and they didn't do anything to address it. And so two years later, we've had to sell the Coliseum. And uh w- once again, we find ourselves uh in a situation where we're not actually having a city council that is addressing the underlying problems. That's why it's time for change. That's why we need a council who's gonna actually tackle this budget, not just use one-time solutions.
Thank you. Uh next question. What current sources of affordable housing funding would you increase or expand? And now that the regional housing bond is no longer on this fall's ballot, what new sources would you support? You please identify both one-time and ongoing funding streams and we will start with Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you so much. Obviously, I'm devastated that regional measure four was removed from the ballot. This is something that I'd been working on with Supervisor Miley that we've been championing here in Alameda County for quite some time, including the Alameda County Affordable Housing Summits that we've been convening to champion affordable housing and the the regional bond. Obviously, we have to focus on Proposition Five at the state level and make sure that that gets across the finish line. But locally, I think we have to really look at what we can do. I'm very supportive of Alameda County going out for an additional housing bond, going it alone. We can't wait for another regional approach and we can't share it with transportation, which is what they're looking at at the regional level. Uh that's the way that we're gonna be able to do it and we need to be able to do it at scale, which is how the county can do it. Uh so I'm very supportive of the county. I've been involved in conversations uh looking at that and I'm ready to make sure that we're advocating to make sure Oakland gets its fair share of that funding.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Guyo.
One second, Councilmember, can you please unmute yourself again?
How about now?
That sounds good.
Testing one, two.
You're good to go.
Am I okay?
Yes.
Yep, yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. So I'm a strong supporter of Proposition Five. I need, I think, I believe we need to make available uh the funding necessary to for the construction and building and supporting affordable housing here in the city of Oakland. And also I would work with the the state of California to make sure our NOFA funds continue to be not only available, but be able to be increased to get a lot of the projects completed or at least get them started. I've been working with Agnes Memorial for their development. They have the property, the land, the developer, but the issue is still funding, be able to receive the funding necessary to take them to the next level. And so what that'll require for us to work directly with the state to be able to increase the the funding necessary to take care of those in need, whether you're homeless or the young people that are looking for a place to to rent uh so they can continue with their education.
Thank you. Next question. There are many strategies to providing affordable housing, including community land trusts. What are some emerging models that you would support? And would you support a Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act policy? And we'll start with Councilmember Guyo.
Oh, absolutely. I think that, you know, when it comes to the land trust, I've worked directly with projects here in the city of Oakland and certainly there are properties uh that are available that we need to work directly uh with some of the groups that are into development of those properties, uh but at the same time, make those available opportunities uh for individuals that would wanna invest and be part of that action. So so when it comes to the land trust, I I know that extremely well and support the development that's necessary uh to house our people here in the city of Oakland.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong.
Uh so I'm really excited about this question. Uh right in my neighborhood, we have uh some homes that are actually owned by the land trust uh and uh and they're connected in the backyard. Uh it's called Cantis Farms. It's an amazing model that has been around um for for many decades in the neighborhood. I had an opportunity to to join them recently um to to tour the facilities and the sites and really understand the housing model that they're bringing. It's such innovative model and I'm so excited to see them expanding uh locally in my neighborhood. As a as a more systemic type of approach, I'm also very proud of the work that I did with Measure A one specifically on our innovation funding. And we were directing this to really try and tackle these types of um unique and emerging opportunities, especially working with our faith-based um and uh and emerging developers to make sure that they have uh pre-development dollars, that they have what they need so that they can scale up and uh and join our developer community.
Thank you. Our next question uh concerns tenant protections. Oakland has a number of policies to protect renters from unaffordable rent increases, arbitrary evictions, and other forms of displacement. Which programs do you think are most effective? What changes would you support? And are there new tenant protection and anti-displacement policies that you would pursue? And we will start with Ms. Armstrong.
Uh thanks for this question. It's it's one that's actually near and dear to my heart as somebody who in the city of Oakland faced uh one thousand dollar per month rent increase uh that ended up displacing my wife and I. Um and so it's something that uh you know, we thought that we were covered and we were not. Um and we didn't know that. And so we got blindsided by this uh very severe rent increase that ended up displacing us. One of the things that I think is really effective, but we need to scale up uh would have been very helpful in this situation and for so many others, but is tenant rental assistance. As you mentioned, there's a lot of laws out there, there's a lot of rules, and sometimes it's very hard for tenants to understand what applies to me, what applies to this type of unit that I'm living in, am I in a mother-in-law, something that was built more recently? Uh so that kind of education, I think we really need to scale up and we need to make sure that people understand their rights and how to advocate for themselves.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Guyo.
Well, you know, I'm a strong supporter and have initiated some rent control pop here in the city of Oakland from uh early in the several years ago, dealing with the families in West Oakland. They were trying to be evicted, removed from and racing their rents. Secondly, even here in in uh in East Oakland today, making sure that the landlords that are acquiring some of these facilities are able to maintain and support uh the tenants that are there. I mean, I'm dealing with a property on Twenty-S sixth Avenue now. Where new ownership and they're trying to improve the facility, but at the same time, there's the need for improvement because of the mold and the electrical. Uh but you know, we cannot be, you know, racing rents and and removing people from those rooms. And so I strongly believe that we need to take care of the families in need and making sure that the city provides assistance and PG&E provides assistance uh to the ownership, but at the same time to keep our tenants in place and don't and but we need to remove them from the buildings or the rooms.
Thank you. Time's up. Uh next question comes from the Oakland United Coalition. The community has not completely felt part of the decision to sell the Coliseum. What plans do you have to ensure that real community engagement and involvement are part of the process of hearing and approving the development agreement, including any community benefits agreement? And we will start with Councilmember Guyo.
Well, you know, I think that, and I know this, the process extremely well. And certainly I have my reservations from the beginning and have asked many questions uh behind closed doors to the mayor, to the administrator, even dealing from the very beginning. Well, what is the land appraisal? Clearly defined to the public, what is the surplus land that at call for? And clearly it calls for, you know, it's public land and you can lease it, but not sell the property. And right now it's under still under the the judge and and legal court dealing with Alameda County uh in terms of given approval for that action to take place. So for me, it's uh the Coliseum, there's still many financial, the questions that need to be answered. And at the same time, you know, the administrator and the mayor needs to be real about the financial difficulty or challenge we have now and be able to address that and not be so dependent on the Coliseum dollars, which are not in place and order and and
Thank you.
Anyways, thank you.
Uh Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you. Councilmember Guyo did a great job outlining the the deficiencies of the current deal that's facing us at this time. But what he didn't talk about was how we make sure that our communities are included in those decisions because from the outside, it doesn't matter what we're asking behind closed doors. It matters what the community hears and whether or not they're actually a part of the process. That's why as part of my campaign, I've knocked on over four thousand doors myself. I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of residents, local businesses, nonprofits, community groups, you name it. It's a grassroots, old-school community organizing type model. And I've heard from all of them that they're hungry for this type of information. And so I'm building the network in District Five that's gonna allow me to not only make sure that my residents and constituents are informed of what's going on, but to make sure I'm actually representing them and and speaking to their needs on the city council.
Thank you. Uh we will now have uh one minute each for a closing statement and we will start with Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you so much again for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about my experience, especially with affordable housing. As I mentioned, I've been the Senior Policy Advisor for Supervisor Nate Miley for eight years. At this point, I've had the opportunity to tackle some of the most challenging problems that are facing Alameda County and the city of Oakland today. Whether it's affordable housing, homelessness prevention, uh displacement prevention, mental health, um responding to the pandemic, you name it. I've also been the Chair of the Bart Police Citizen Review Board, where I championed policies that not only reduced the cost of our public safety, but improved response times. The challenges that we're facing in the city of Oakland are vast. They are great. And they require systemic solutions that tackle the root causes of the problems. This is what I've spent my career doing. This is the vision that I have for Oakland, but I can't do it alone. And that's why I'm asking all of you to join me in making this vision for Oakland a reality. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Guyo, your closing statement.
Yes, uh and I wanna thank the public for the opportunity to have served and certainly those that know me, it's not about what you say, what you do. I can talk about the problem, give advice and look for advice, but at the end of the day, it's getting the work done. And so my experience, having grown up here in the city of Oakland, from cleaning the streets, I'm not gonna talk about it. I'm gonna be out there doing it and making sure that the neighbors join me to have a clean, safe city. And when it comes to housing, certainly I recognize that. I grew up in Section Eight and know welfare extremely well, but I understand the process and I understand the need for some of us that we need opportunities and support to take, make sure that that our children and families have a safe place to live in and a and a school that we all can uh enjoy and celebrate and learn from. So for me, it's getting out in the neighborhood, doing things and not just sitting there making more policy after more policy and talking about it. So I I thank the public for the opportunity and look forward to having people join me neighborhood to get the work done. Thank you.
Thank you. Um thank you to both candidates for joining us. Uh I believe we're gonna take a brief pause before beginning our next panel featuring candidates for District Seven.
Yes, I am back on. Thank you, Jeff, so much for moderating. Great job. Thank you to both of our uh candidates for um for joining us. And I'm Dolores Sahada, the Director of Organizing with East Bay Housing Organizations. We're running short on time, so we're gonna jump right into the next one. We're going to promote our two attendees uh candidates for the um the seven uh position. And uh our moderator for this is going to be Kiki Poe, uh EPO's Chief Op Off Chief Operating Officer. Um and Kiki is Oakland-born and raised, so really excited. Um and if both candidates that have joined us can please turn their cameras on, I will say that again, we invited all the candidates. This is who confirmed and um who who uh is joining us. We did have a opportunity to provide a statement. Um there was one candidate who provided a statement, so we are going to post that when the video is posted on our website. Um I believe Marcy Hodge is also joining us, so Marcy, if you can turn your camera on so we can see you, that would be great.
Um I'm driving right now. I'll be
Okay.
stationed in about seven, eight minutes. Yes.
Okay.
I'll be on camera shortly.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Um and uh just as a reminder, I do have the capacity to mute if you are over time. There is a timer that you will be able to see on your screen that will track your time. And um thanks so much. Let me toss it over to Kiki.
All right. Thank you so much, Dolores. Um I want to just check in and see, America, how you would like to be addressed? We use, we often Goolsby or Ms. Hodge, so I wanted to just kind of check in with you both.
Marika is fine. Marika.
Thank you.
Mark, uh Marcy is fine as well.
Awesome. Well, thank you both. All right. As a note to the panelists, the timer is on your screen. Thank you, Damian, and we thank you for abiding by the rules of keeping to your time. So first, we're going to start with a minute and a half for each of you to introduce yourself and share why you are the most qualified to be our next District Seven City Councilmember. And we're gonna start with Marcy.
Yes, good evening. My name is Marcy Hodge, candidate for District Seven. Uh I am a lifelong resident of East Oakland, born and raised, attended the uh local public schools and also uh attended uh Bay Area colleges here in the city of Oakland. Um I'm qualified as a former uh Peralta Community College trustee for Area Seven. I served there for two terms where um we managed a hundred million dollar budget. Um there I found um the aptitude of working very well with uh my colleagues as well as with district uh uh employees and uh representatives of the unions. Um I served in a capacity where um I made decisions that were fair and just. Um I also sat on the uh Oakland Budget Committee um where I was appointed. Uh my passion for the city um is bred and born and I have very um real concerns about the city and the and the lack of responsiveness that we've had for okay, uh District Seven.
Okay, let's pass it over to America.
Hi. Thank you. Yeah, this is Marika Goolsby and I am qualified for this position because I am a Bay Area native, born and raised in San Francisco. I have lived in the East Bay all of my adult life, moved around a lot, dodging uh rent that is constantly in being inflated. I, for the past ten years, I have been an active ACE member. I am also on their board. I am also a tenant alternate on the Oakland Rent Board. I have lived through the housing crisis, seen the ups and downs, was almost displaced. And I am connected And I am connected to this community and the people here. I have a genuine desire to see District Seven. Bloom and blossom into what I know it can be. And with the community's help as well as other city council members, it can happen. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, let's jump into our first question. You will have one minute to answer. So starting with a question from the Alameda County Community Food Bank. If elected, how will you work with diverse stakeholders to address housing insecurity? As a major driving factor behind food insecurity, tackling the two issues together rather than separately. And we'll start with Marika.
Thank you for that question. Yeah, I think that's very important. Food insecurity and housing insecurity. Go together because if you are constantly trying to choose between paying rent and buying groceries, that is a real problem. We definitely need people to have access to healthy food. We need people to have affordable housing. I would work closely with basically all, all stakeholders or people involved that are. Passionate about this and want to make a change by meeting with them, by coming up with plans that involve the community. To move forward, to make sure people don't have to make that choice of a roof over my head or food in my belly. That is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Uh, if you liked it, I would work to address the housing and it's uh food insecurity uh challenges that we have by. Working collaboratively with the different organizations. And seeking, you know, the expertise from um all parties. So that uh decisions and votes are made based on the best information that can be provided. I would also engage uh diverse uh stakeholders, including affordable housing as well as um those who are advocates for. Um, food secure, security as well. Um, it's important to uh seek out community members and create policies that address both. Uh, the Oakland City Council also has a um, a well-developed uh general plan, master plan as well. That has identified many stakeholders and all have and uh placed their input into those strategic plans, so that would be important. Very important to also have accessibility to that and be mindful of those goals and objectives, looking for data. And um guiding my decisions based off of the data and uh collaborative efforts uh from different organizations and stakeholders.
So I want to give a reminder to please watch your time. Okay, so next question. What current sources of affordable housing funding would you increase or expand? Especially now that the regional housing bond is no longer on this fall's ballot, what new sources would you support? Please identify both one-time and ongoing funding streams, and we'll start with Marcy.
Um, yes, I'll try and be mindful while I'm driving. I'm almost at my destination. Um, but it would be important to identify the different sources. Um, that uh the city of Oakland has been uh working with, the federal government, the state. Uh, to look at options in which we can uh derive additional fundings. Um, it's going to also be important to uh to work with the different city council persons, the counties. Um, all agencies that are on board to try to extract, we do have the uh measures, the bonds as well to um. Help to diversify um the budgeting that we have. Um, and we may need to go back out for additional funding. I believe it's about three hundred and thirty, three hundred and twenty-five million uh that was allocated towards affordable housing. So we do need to look at that. I think it's very important also to take into consideration that redevelopment dollars and to try to advocate to get those dollars back. Um, I know that the office was uh shut down, of course, under Jerry Brown as governor. Um, but it was, it's going to be very important to look at uh driving that um back to life for Oakland.
Thank you, Marika.
Thank you for that question. I think as far as securing funding for affordable housing. We definitely need to explore all possible grants, all possible funding from uh state and county. I believe we need to um also. Get funding specifically for land trust and community um organizations that are. Focused on building housing and. Put time, energy into exploring all options, not just one or two. So, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next question, there are many strategies to provide affordable housing, including land trusts. What are some emerging models that you would support? And more specifically, would you support a tenant opportunity to purchase act policy? And we'll start with Marika.
Yes, I have firsthand experience as far as community land trust. My home is a community land trust home, so I would definitely want to put time, money and energy into that. I support uh TOPA, Tenet Opportunity to Purchase Act, because that will at least give. Community an opportunity to stay in the community and stays, stay stable. And that's definitely uh something that we need instead of displacing people. Uh, for corporate landlords or um just someone from outside of the community. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Pass it over to Marcy.
Um, I, I got part of the question, but uh I guess in terms of. I guess strategies for affordable housing, it would include the community land trusts, which um allow communities to. Collectively own um land as well as inclu- inclusionary zoning, something else that we need to also. Uh, take into consideration when uh requiring developers um to include affordable housing. And uh, of course, preservation of existing affordable housing is also important. Um, public-private partnerships is something else that we can, as city council and uh elected official, is to collaborate with private and uh. Private developers through incentives. And last, I would say uh utilizing surplus uh public land. And hopefully I answered the, the question properly uh as I missed a, a section of it.
Thank you. And, and just as a reminder, questions are being popped in the chat. I know um. Marcy is driving, but the questions are in the chat after uh I read them off. Next question, now a question on tenant protections. So Oakland has a number of policies to protect renters from unaffordable rent increases. Arbitrary evictions and other forms of displacement. Which programs do you think are most effective? What changes would you support? Are there new tenant protection and anti-displacement policies that you would pursue? And we'll start with Marcy.
Okay, I made it to my destination. I'll be at my desk shortly. Um, in terms of. Rent control, we have to uh just limit the amount and frequency. Of uh rent increases and the city council has been doing, got a good job um of, of. Managing uh that through different policies. Uh, the Just Cause Eviction Protections are definitely important, so leveraging those laws to prevent landlords. Um, from evicting tenants. Um, tenant, the, the Tenant Rights Council uh provides programs that. Provide legal representations and, and that's an important playing field for tenants to have accessibility to, to understand their rights. Um, changes I would support would be closing loopholes. Um, eviction, of course, moratoriums are another tool in which uh the council can use and then um leveraging penalties.
Thank you, Marcy, and Marika.
Thank you. I worked hard with ACE on tenant protections and some of my favorites are anti-harassment. The Ellis Act. And eviction moratorium, we worked long and hard on that. And just cause eviction, you can't just evict someone ju- just because you had a bad day or whatever. And definitely rent caps, so your rent can't just be doubled. Just randomly. And um I think if I had to change anything about any of those that I just named, the moratorium. I wish it could be tailored just to focus on corporate landlords and not necessarily mom and pop landlords. Um, because I really believe that tenants and these mom and pop landlords should be on the same side.
Thank you. Let's see, now we have a city budget question. While most of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund does not come from the general fund. There's more than that could be done with the general fund to ensure the three Ps. Protection, preservation, production are being prioritized in our budget. What is your approach to reaching a balanced budget? How do you pri- how do you prioritize the three Ps? When it is often put against ano- other items in the budget? And we'll start with Marika.
Thank you. That is a good question. How do we balance uh whilst, whilst still having priority? I think that's, that goes to negotiating. And having conversations on how to maintain balance and priority at the same time. I think when certain people think one thing is way more important than something else, then things get out of balance. So I think for this, we need clear communication and, and strong partnerships. To create the balance and priori- for a priority that we need. Thanks.
Thank you. And Marcy, are you still with us? It looks like you're muted.
Um, in terms of the three Ps, uh it's going to be important to prioritize. Those different areas um in, when managing uh the city budget. Um. Uh, we have to prioritize the budget urgency and its impact. Uh, ensuring that housing uh protection and preservation are prioritized. Given the immediate impact on um. Preventing uh displacement, uh that's going to be the uh priority in, in terms of my um. Categorization. Uh, uh producing uh planned. Long-term planning for dedicated revenue streams um such as impact fees. Uh, from new developments uh is also going to be important, leveraging um outside funding.
Thank you so much. All right, we have one last question before closing remarks, and this question is from the Oakland United Coalition. Community has not completely felt part of the decision to sell the Colosseum. What plans do you have to ensure that real community engagement and involvement are part of the process? Of hearing and approving the development agreement, including any community benefits agreement? And we'll start with Marcy.
Um, it's a priority to um access and have assess uh, uh, and, and have an open door policy. So that um. Different advocacy groups, um if they don't feel like they have been included. Can uh reach out to District Seven uh representatives, uh whether that's my staff or myself to let folks know that. There's a concern and um. Uh, the development of that Colosseum is a priority and it should have a, all voices. Uh, all voices should be um included in the development of the Colosseum land. Uh, we have to establish. And I know there, there was one, uh but there has to be an establishment and an advisory committee. Um, there has to be multiple points of input. Where along the process of the development that uh it feels like their voices are being heard.
And Marika.
Thank you for the question. I think it is a shame that community feels like they weren't involved in the sale process. So we definitely have to do something different as far as development. I think we need to do a much better job of letting community know. When the meetings are happening to talk about the development and how they can be involved by showing up to meetings, by. Writing uh emails, maybe having a hotline that folks can call in on. Maybe having presentations at community groups, so we're bringing the information to the community. So there needs to be multiple ways of letting community know that their voice matters and we're going to collect their voice. And multiple different ways, so they are a part of the process.
Thank you both. Now we will take one minute to say, or for each of you to have one minute to say your closing remarks. And we'll start with Marika Goolsby.
Thank you so much um for this forum and the opportunity to speak to you. Housing is my passion. I have been working with ACE for almost ten years now. Uh, I think it's at the root of all, all of District Seven's issues because we need stability. We need housing, we need employment, just to get some stability. I'm passionate, I'm hardworking, I'm a fighter, and I would love to have your endorsement. Thank you.
And Marcy Hodge.
All right. Um, thank you once again for having me here uh to participate in this uh forum. That's important. Oakland is at a crossroads and we need leadership that is going to be an advocate for. Uh, not only District Seven, but for those who uh find themselves in um unstable uh situations. We need a city council that will con- continue on with the advocacy of housing first policies. Um, those are important components to me. Um, it helps to reduce crime. It helps to reduce. Um, insecurity in the city of Oakland and we must continue on in that, in that, that phase. Um, my experience as a community leader. Um, advocate, business leader, uh and former elected official has prepared me to tackle the issues head on. Uh, I am committed to fostering transparency, accountability and real collaborations with our, our residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to both of our candidates. Uh, we will now have a break for a few minutes as we prepare for our final panel. Of the evening with the candidates for the at-large seat.
Thank you. Thank you uh to our moderator, Kiki. Thank you to our two um panelists for those responses. And we're going to pause as we have uh seven uh candidates participating in this next panel, so we just want to. Make sure on the tech side, we promote them to as panelists and we are prepared for that. So if you give us a couple of minutes, we'll be right back.
Am I to stay for this portion?
Hi, no, you're good to go.
Okay, thanks. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. And if we can have the candidates for at-large, um if you can just um. Uh, turn your camera off, that would be great. And as a reminder, one of the rules of. Our forum, which you agreed to and signed off on, is that your background cannot be promoted, promoting. Any particular candidate, so a default background, a blurred background is totally acceptable, but something with your name on it is not. And if the candidates want to turn their cameras off for a couple of minutes, then we'll, 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 we'll notify you when we're starting.
Hey folks, just wanted to make sure you can see and hear me, okay?
Hi, yes, welcome. Uh, we are asking the candidates to turn their cameras off, but actually I all our confirmed candidates have joined, so if all our candidates and our moderator can turn their cameras on, um we can get started a little bit early. Uh, so just a couple reminders, you all did, so I think we're missing Christina, if you wanna turn your camera on. Okay.
You guys good?
I think this is everybody. Thank you for joining us. Just as a reminder, um before we jump in, we we are a couple minutes ahead, so wanna thank you all for joining us for EPO's um panel. Uh, we're gonna be asking questions on housing. If you uh want to um make sure that that your background is not promoting anybody or promoting yourself, that is one of the rules that you agreed to. You also agreed that I have permission to mute you if you are over time. We are gonna have a screen with a timer right there. Uh, thank you, Damian, that is going to be uh counting you down. Because we have such a large panel, we are only allotting one minute for every question. So the order was predetermined. I put everyone's name into a random generator, hit it three times, and then that was the order. So the order for tonight's forum is uh this is my last name. We have uh Robinson first, uh Danino, Tostado, Armstrong, Petchnuck, Brown, Wang. And what's gonna happen is person number one will answer, and then for the next question, that pers- person number one will answer last. The order will also be in the chat box for you, so if you just remember who you go after, you'll know when your turns on uh and up. So um with that, I wanna introduce our uh our moderator for tonight. The um Ronnie Boyd is Bay Area, born and raised. She is the uh the organizer for the for EPO's Faith and Justice Program, and I'm really excited to have her facilitating this, and uh take it away, Ronnie.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, candidates, for joining us. Uh, please note that because we have such a large panel, um there's only gonna be one minute it will be allotted to answer all que- questions, including your introduction. Um, so in a minute, please introduce yourself, uh including how you would like to be addressed, if you'd like to go by Miss, Mrs., Mix, Mister, that'll be helpful for us. Um, and share why you are most qualified to be our next at-large city council member. And we are gonna start it off with Robinson.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Pastor Sabine Robertson. Um, just happy to be here today. Um, one was the reason why I'm the most qualified. You got most qualified for housing, um um always trying to help people get their housing. We got help in less fortunate, some got mental health problems, and um some need social workers for to help them pay their rent. You know, so we gotta uh make sure that we keep people housed, but um I would be a fighter. I'll fight for everybody, Oakland, the homeless. I'll fight for the homeowners, I'll fight for everybody. I'm gonna be a fighter. And uh, you see, both can go win. Vote Pastor Sabine. Go next.
Thank you. And Sean Danino?
Yep.
Who's to go next?
Yep. Hey, everyone, Sean Danino, UCNA pronouns, really honored, I'm very grateful for the work of EPO. Um, I have lived experience around homelessness, and I can say firsthand that homelessness is a policy choice and it's the wrong one to be making. I believe housing is a human right. I believe housing is healthcare, housing is the most important form of reparative justice. Um, I spent the last five years at the State Housing Department, planned for a quarter million homes across the state, had the privilege of reviewing Oakland's housing plan, and got the Rockbridge neighborhood desegregated and allowed to accommodate an additional five thousand mixed-income homes. Often say that may be the best thing I do in my entire life. I have a deeply serious housing platform with a number of policies that we'll be releasing in the upcoming days. Most of all, you can go to daninoforOakland.com. When you click on our vision page, you can see our cartoon illustrated by the one and only Alfred Wu of our zero displacement housing program that threads the needle in an extremely effective way to allow way more property taxes and make sure we can increase the allowable housing stock while making sure residents stay in place. I have a number of other programs and hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. Next, we have Tina Tostado.
Hi, my name is Christina Tostado. I also go by Tina from the town. I am a community leader here in Oakland. I am a library commissioner. I'm on different boards with reading partners, the Oakland Education Fund. I was part of Nate Miley's Illegal Dumping Pilot. I'm a mentor. Um, everything I do in Oakland is volunteer. Uh, like I said, I was born and raised here in Oakland. And for me, uh my top priorities are mental health, economic business development, and Measure You, making sure that that it works for us, the people of Oakland. I am a candidate that's collaborated and has great relationships with government, with business and community stakeholders. I am currently a supervisor at a multi-billion dollar company, which is Costco. And I'm sort of like Costco. I'm big, I'm not fancy, and I dare you not to like me. Make sure that you vote for me, Christina Tostado.
Thank you. Next, we have Laron Armstrong.
Hi, I'm Laron Armstrong, uh and thank you for having me. I'm really running on a platform of my experience as someone that was the former Chief of Police for the Oakland Police Department, and led the largest department in the city of Oakland with over eleven hundred employees, uh managing a budget of over three hundred and fifty million. Uh, I have the experience to get on the job and get things done from day one. Uh, I've balanced budgets before in the city of Oakland. I've worked in collaborative form across departments, inner departments, as well as other uh city nonprofits and others to get things done in the city of Oakland, and that's the experience that I wanna bring uh to the council. And so on November fifth, uh vote for Laron Armstrong. You can look at our platform, Armstrong for Oakland, as we are, we believe we're the candidate that brings the most experience on how to address issues in the city of Oakland, and how to bring the leadership needed right now in this critical moment to immediately get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Min- Mindy Petchnick.
There we go. Thanks for this forum and um then my qualifications for actually being have a vision for the entire city. And actually see how the big problem of Oakland, which didn't start yesterday, which goes back many, many, many days, has got to be dealt with, and I do have a plan for dealing with that. And that means homelessness, hunger, you know, housing, crime, whatever it is, all stems from the same problem. And I have fifty years of experience in American system economics from ha- from working in New York to Chicago to now here in 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 Oakland. And that's what I bring to the plate. I'm an outsider. I'm not part of the established machine of Oakland. And therefore I bring that's different, that's fresh, and not connected to any political ties in the city, so that I could actually carry out and work with many people across the board to carry it. So that's why I say vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next we have Rowena Brown.
Hello, good evening, Rowena Brown, um proud East Bay native. Um, have been working on behalf of Oaklanders for about uh, you know, about a decade now in various capacities. Tended Laney College, Wenton Mills College, Law School, um at UC Hastings just across the bay. Um, used to uh be an optician, eighth grade civics education te- teacher. Um, I I would say that my experience really uh stems from working uh for the city of Oakland during the pandemic, um helping to serve the East Oakland community. And then now in my current role as a district director to Assemblymember Mia Bonta, I've had the opportunity to work on statewide um legislation, um helping to uh streamline processes around uh school districts needing to build on their land, um to environmental policy as well as other pieces of legislation as well. And so I would say that I'm one of the the main candidates that from day one would be able to uh get started.
Thank you. And then we have Charlene Wang.
Hi there. I'm so glad to be here. I'm such an important forum to have, especially around housing. Um, I'm an East Bay native. Um, and my grandparents actually um who who helped to raise me actually lived in Oakland's uh Oak Center Towers, as well as Saint Mary's Center, right off the highway in West Oakland, in uh affordable housing. And so I know the importance, how and how much that's given uh to my family. Um, I've worked on all sorts of social uh policy reform uh in Massachusetts. Um, I worked on reform of the homelessness response system to get people off the streets uh before they got uh became chronically homeless. Um, I was also an appointed official of the Biden-Harris administration. Uh, you know, sat on the White House Urban Equitable Development Council, really worked on housing policy, uh worked on better compensation for those who were displaced through eminent domain. I eliminated red tape for uh cities to build temporary shelter in their highways. Um, I also stood up a four billion dollar program to restore communities that were uh raised and harmed by highways. That's actually bringing a general, a generational opportunity uh for social housing across the United States, and specifically thirty-two million dollars to Oakland, and I am out of
Okay, thank you. Now we have our first question. So what current sources of affordable housing funding would you increase or expand? Especially now that the Regional Housing Bond is no longer on this fall's ballot, what new sources would you support? Please identify both one-time and ongoing funding streams. And we're gonna start with uh Sean Danino.
Hey, folks, um sorry, you're uh on my backpacks, there's a little bit of slide on the screen. Man, I have so much to say on this one. There are so many beautiful types of housing that we made illegal in the fifty, sixties, and seventies for entirely racist reasons that surround our community. Tens of thousands of people live in them across the city of Oakland, um but they're fully illegal to create under today's zoning rules. Single stairwell buildings, basically all of what surrounds Lake Merritt would be illegal to build today. Missing middle housing, like bungalow courts and cottage courts. I have the skills to rewrite these rules so that we are able to relegalize these affordable housing typologies. Another thing I will say, also actually coming from the headquarters of East Bay DSA, is that I'm deeply in favor of social housing. Social housing is a naturally occurring type of affordable housing that involves an income tax to cross-subsidize, where market rate folks are able to directly use their income to subsidize lower-income households, very low-income households. This is something that has gotten cities like Vienna and Singapore to functionally zero homelessness. Also, most of all, learn about by Zero Displacement Housing Program. I have a number of expertise sources and levels of expertise to offer to this. Vote Sean Danino, yeah.
Thank you. And next we have Tina Tostado.
Yes, and can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so what I would do is I would expedite zoning, making sure that we're able to build. Um, I would increase funding and resources to support affordable housing. I would make sure I continue to get involved in the community, engage with the community, and making sure that um you know, we get the input with the neighbors, because you know, we could we can build on on different neighborhoods, but if the neighbors, it's gonna affect them in any ways or finding ways to even um increase revenue here, uh we can work alongside with BART and making sure that in the communities that we have, we can implement uh making money, but also having some funding for affordable housing and making sure that we have um innovative solutions like the tiny home projects. I might, I know that was private funding through uh Mayor Libby Schaff's office too, but making sure that you can also, you know, build in your backyard and that would increase revenue and income for Oaklanders.
Thank you. Next, we have Laron Armstrong.
Yes, I I think we have to leverage dollars that we've got through bond measures like Measure You, uh better working within a collaborative uh fashion with developers. I think we have to be able to streamline development processes so that it can be more easier and more straightforward for those looking to develop uh in the city of Oakland. And I think we need to de- uh support more of our community-based organizations that have already gotten grant funding or other funding for developments through our our city. We know that uh places, uh organizations like EVALC or The Roots Organizations have already received grant funding to, you know, build developments in the city of Oakland. We as uh the city who is strapped with funds need to support those programs and leverage the bond dollars that we have to support those programs that are designed to build more affordable housing in communities that are much needed. As someone who is uh grew up in subsidized housing in West Oakland, I understand how important that housing need is. And so those projects will be critically important, particularly in DP Stoke.
Thank you. And next we have Mindy Petchnick.
Yeah, hi. Well, the first thing I would do is deal with the debt, because uh housing can be built. We can develop it, but we have to get rid of two things. One is the shut down the real estate speculation. There's a lot of speculation that goes on, and and if we redirect the money into actually economy of Oakland again, we have to have it productive. This city is paying millions and millions of dollars to Wall Street speculators, debt that was incurred in the nineteen nineties. Now, why are we still doing that? And that's where we need to go in and clean out the whole budget process so that you could actually find the kind of housing that's affordable to families, that's affordable to any citizen of of Oakland, because it's outrageous. I've lived across the country. This where the rents were as expensive as they are here in in California and in Oakland. So that's some of what I would do to solve the problem. There's more to say, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and next we have Rowena Brown.
Excellent. Um, thank you so much for the question. I I know that there was a key element to this around what fu- what would you fund one time versus ongoing? Um, I think I would, we we want, I think uh we're kind of in this situation where we need more of the funding to be more consistent, right? In order to really have more secure, stable housing. Um, so I would really want to leverage um resources from our state partners to ensure uh that that funding is more ongo- going. Um, I'm also interested in ensuring that we have uh that we can increase like uh voucher programs for more more housing, more affordable housing as well. And then as far as on the on the one-time kind of funding, um potentially, uh I would look to ensure that um, you know, we're providing more rental re- relief services to community members. Um, as we know that many are still trying to come um out of the impacts of the pandemic.
I think Ronnie is frozen. We will go to uh Charlene.
Hi, yes, um, great question. So in terms of funding for affordable housing, first, we just need to make the most out of Measure You. Um, when it comes to an ongoing source of revenue, the the model that I'm actually running on is actually cultural districts um as a form of both uh, you know, long-term development of affordable housing as well as uh uh basically small uh business um support and in spurring the development of new small businesses all throughout Oakland, especially in our BIPOC communities. Uh, we can use something called Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts, which um is recently passed in the California Legislature that ensures that we can have that kind of uh funding for low-income affordable housing land trusts. Um, also at the federal level, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has a number of key grants that we need to pursue. has a number of key grants that we need to pursue. There's, of course, the Community Development Block Grants. There's Emergency Solutions Grants, that's really for, you know, housing and homelessness. And we also have the Home Investment Partnership Programs, which ensures that we are rehabilitating. And I don't have enough time, so that's it.
Robyn Robinson. I believe you're muted. Pastor Robinson, I just asked you to unmute. There it goes.
Hello, hey, how are you doing? How you doing? I'm Pastor Fabian Robinson, first thing, I'm gonna tell you none of these programs are working. You say what program working, none of them. You said, why none of the programs ain't working? Because we still got homeless people. And it don't make no sense that the city of Oakland, California, it don't make no sense that a person in the United States of America should not be housed. I like how Sean Denial is like, everybody, it's a right for everybody Oakland to have a house. So if you want to say Measure U works, that's fine, but no, it don't work, because you still got homeless people out there. With low-income housing, you got, what's that, reverse mortgages. That'd put a lot of African-Americans out their houses. We gotta start fighting for the people, and we start, gotta get rid of the reverse mortgages in Oakland. Because all it's doing is in the poor community, and then they wind up homeless. And while I'm saying that, nobody should be left behind, we need more shelters, including the one, like Jack London Square. We need, nobody should be homeless. Have you ever slept in your car before? It's horrible. Have you ever slept outside before? It's horrible. It'd be cold outside, it'd be raining, it's horrible, okay, my time up.
Now a question on tenant protections. Oakland has a number of policies to protect renters from unaffordable rent increases, arbitrary evictions, and other forms of displacement. Which programs do you think are most effective? What changes would you support? Are there new tenant protection and anti-displacement policies that you would pursue? Tina Tostado.
Hi, so actually, I had to deal with learning about my tenants' rights here in the city of Oakland. And rent control is important, and knowing your rights is important. So some of the issues that we've had is even if someone reads their rights, the only way you can get your tenants' rights investigated or looked at is by going to court. Right now mediation is is not, it's volunteer. So talking to your landlord and having a conversation and actually coming up with an agreement is not something that you're, that you have to do. So I actually would enforce that, because that's important. You need to have a communication, you need to come up with an agreement and making sure that these landlords aren't abusing their rights, which some of them are. And we do need to enforce it. We need to make sure that tenants aren't taking advantage of, of, I mean, sorry, landlords aren't taking advantage of tenants.
Laurent Armstrong.
Yes, I I support tenant protection rights, and I want to make sure that everybody is housed. I mean, I think it's critically important that we make sure before we allow people to evict people in the city of Oakland that we've thoroughly gone through a process which allows them to actually leverage the services that are available to them so that they can maintain their housing. And so I would be in support of continuing to support our current tenant protection rights. But also, I want to make sure that we also make sure that those small property owners who own small local properties that help to generate their retirement revenues, that we make sure that whatever policies are in place are fair to them as well. Now, we're not talking about big, large apartment complexes, but we're talking about people who have rented out their rooms at their homes or rented out in-law unit, making sure that people who utilize that as income can actually utilize that. So making sure that laws are followed on both sides is critically important. But making sure that our, the existing tenant rights are followed is what's been important to me.
Mindy?
Okay, well, I think I would say that you have to have tenants' rights, and you also have to have. And 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 it is the case, we're not talking about corporate straws. But of cour-, and I know landlords who had tenants abuse them, and I've been a tenant my adult life, and I've had, they know the problems with bad landlords, and I also know good landlords. Overall question I would raise is we got to bring down the cost of housing. Costs of what it takes to live in Oakland and California at this point. And that's where I go back to what I've been saying about the debt of Oakland, which really has to be taken apart, and the derivative investment into real estate have to stop. And the derivative investments of the city have to stop. This, and we have to bring back a real manufacturing industrial base so that the population can be fully employed, so that we don't have the kinds of problems we have today. So I would just leave it at that, but that's what I would say.
Rowena?
Thank you for this question. I've been able to work in this space, both during the pandemic and in my current role. And what I've found is that a lot of the the systems that are put in place, they need, they need to be more resourced. And so the ones that I'm speaking of is the Rental Relief Program. Definitely more funding to ensure that tenants have, you know, have something to fall back on. And also in the space of actually legal services and really ensuring that there's more funding going to that to help prevent displacement. So those would be kind of the two areas that I would want to help support. And then I'm really also excited about the passing of AB, I think it's 846, that has to do with placing a cap on rent increases for those that are in the low-income units. And that'll something, that'll be something that takes effect June of 2025. That will be very supportive in Oakland.
Charlene?
Hi, yeah, this is so important. We need to prevent the displacement of people, to prevent people from going into homelessness. First of all, our Emergency Rental Assistance Program has been out of funds. That is one of the programs that I am most interested in ensuring that we do refund that program, because it is so important to prevent people from, you know, going to homelessness. The other thing is just around ensuring that the attorney actually, the city attorney has the power to actually proactively enforce our rent control laws. I've heard just from canvassing and talking to people, too many instances whereby landlords are illegally raising the rent above the rent control limits. But even though we have a name, a set of legal services available to people, it's not. People are being shunted from service to service. And finally, the thing that I would be really interested in exploring is creating tax incentives so that people who, for example, have lower credit scores or bad credit history, the landlords, maybe mom and pops can be in.
Fabian?
Hey, how are you doing? Could you hear me? You hear me good now?
Yes.
How are you doing? What I say is about, what was the question? Can you hear what the question, repeat the question one time?
Oakland has a number of policies to protect renters from unaffordable rent increases.
Okay, what it is, what I say about that, I said that we gotta make sure that we take care of the less people. And they got a lot of people that have to check away from getting, from being homeless. All you make on unemployment is $900. So we do have to make sure that if somebody is not paying their rent, we need to make sure that we give them a social worker. They need somebody to help them be able to pay their rent, or find out why they ain't paying their rent so they can get programs. We gotta have programs for the help to house, stay housed. And then the homeless, we gotta make sure that we have shelters. We gotta make sure that we have homes. We got the Greyhound building, we got all these buildings in West Oakland that aren't occupied. Every building should be occupied as long as we got a homeless person. And every bed should be filled with a different person. Nobody do not need to sleep outside where it's dangerous, where they can get killed. And they, that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Sean?
Yep. Yeah, lots of great ideas in the room. Definitely in favor of tax incentives for renters. You know, I've worked on things like the Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, the Community Opportunity to Purchase Act, TOPA and COPA. Big believer in rent control, really grateful that we have that on the books. Emergency rental assistance programs are great. Although I'll share, you know, no candidate has the level of policy detail to get us to the housing abundance we need. So many of the naturally affordable homes that we live in are illegal to recreate under today's zoning rules. That is something we really need to undo, and we need someone with the land use expertise to do it. My Zero Displacement Housing Program originally only targeted homeowners, but I talked to land trusts and I talked to a lot of tenants' rights advocates, and we figured out a model so that we can expand it to renters so that renters can stay in place while we drastically increase the allowable housing stock inside of our neighborhoods. I've been a lifelong renter, I know what it's like to face that pressure. I'm a strong believer in good legal assistance and tenant protections, and have worked to affirmatively furthering fair housing under five years at the State Housing Department. So no candidate will be a better advocate for it.
Next question. There are many strategies to providing affordable housing, including land trusts. What are some emerging models that you would support? And more specifically, would you support a Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act policy? Laurent?
Yes, I would support a tenant opportunity to purchase. I think it's important, I mean, I will say my family was, has renters that have lived in some housing for over 20 years. It seems like it would be appropriate when that property is up for sale that they would have the opportunity to purchase that property. But I think it's also important that we make sure that those that are selling, you know, get fair market value for their properties as well. And so we have to make sure if we create policy that we have a comprehensive discussion with all community members to make sure that we're, that we're providing support on both sides. And so while I do support the opportunity for those to purchase, that would be critically important, but also support programs that help with first-time home buyers and really recognizing that that funding that could support people buying their first homes is critical. I had a program like that that helped me buy my first home. And I think continuing with the support programs like that is critically important.
Mindy?
Okay, hi. Yeah, the idea of a tenant opportunity purchase is actually, I think, a good idea. Because as a tenant, you'd spend a lot of money paying rent for so many years. And, you know, overall, I go back to the point I've been raising. Because I think we really have to get to the cause of the problems of why do we have this horrible homelessness? Why do we have people going hungry? Why do we have people without places to live in 2024? And that really goes back to reorganizing the whole way that the Oakland thinks about actually solving the problem to make, and it can be done. Put into place an economy that actually functions, where people have jobs again, where they can get skills again, where they can be trained again, where they can actually have their dignity and and life back again. And then housing becomes solvable in that light. So I'll leave it at that.
Rowena?
Yes, so yes, indeed, definitely fully supportive of the Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act. I believe that in the city of Oakland, we we have, this is, we have a lot of opportunity to really reimagine how we are, you know, building and and making housing more accessible, kind of as what was mentioned, you know, as a young person. You know, I I hope to one day actually own a home. And so that's one of my priorities, is ensuring that we actually are putting, you know, good policies in place that make, you know, housing affordability really accessible to all who are living here in order to prevent displacement as well. And I'll just leave it at that.
Charlene?
Hey, yeah, absolutely support TOPA and support community land trusts. I'm proud that the $4 billion infrastructure program that I mentioned to restore communities that were raised and segregated by the highway system. I fought in launching that program to ensure that what is traditionally transportation funding can actually fund also community land trust. So locally, when we have Interstate 980 and we look at transforming that piece of highway, that will also fund community land trusts here in Oakland. In terms of other emerging models I'm interested in funding, I know that our Oakland Housing Authority has incredibly long waiting lists here. People want to get into public housing, the units are not available. So I'm very much interested in learning from Montgomery County where they actually use this mixed-income model to have private investments actually also subsidize basically public housing, social housing. This is a social housing model that I'm very much interested in exploring with the Oakland Housing Authority to bring here to Oakland.
Fabian?
So what I want to do, like I said again, and I said it for the first time, that I believe that all of the laws for housing, could you see me? Could you see me?
We cannot see you. I believe we lost him. We can move to next person until he comes back. So Sean, take it away.
Yes, so to answer your question very directly, yes, very in favor of TOPA and COPA. In fact, I've worked on implementing and expanding those programs in the city of San Jose. Worked on a lot of housing element programs to support it. I also just want to echo support for social housing, what are sometimes called mixed-income models. That is not something I will say that I will explore. That is something I will actively commit to proposing legislation around. It is great to be able to cross-subsidize and be able to use wealthy households to be able to subsidize lower-income households. This is the way that we get to affordability. I've worked closely with a wide variety of land trusts across my housing work, across the city of San Jose, across the state of California. There is direct buy-in from the four programs, like the Zero Displacement Housing Program, as well as programs to re-expand the allowable housing stock group.
Tina, go ahead.
We lost, sorry, sorry, this is Dolores, I think we lost it.
Yeah, I was gonna tell you, I think his last maybe 10, 12 seconds were not heard.
We can give you more seconds.
Sorry, this is for me, for Sean or?
Yeah, Sean, the last part you were talking about, we couldn't hear it.
Thank you, thanks for calling that out, Christina. Yeah, so in favor of mixed-end, mixed-income housing programs, in favor of social housing programs, have worked closely with a wide variety of land trusts. We need to get to housing abundance so that we can protect our kids. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
So I was fortunate enough to buy a house at the age of 25, 26, because my dad taught me that having good credit is the most important thing in America. So one of the things that I plan to do with business development is to teach financial education. Some people don't even know what a credit score is. So we gotta get people educated and set up for success, to be ready to purchase homes, to have the credit score that you need to buy, and to have the money that you need, and the knowledge that you don't need the full 20%, you know? But making sure that land trust also keeps community people, people in the community in homes and having a roof over their head, and making sure that we can offer mental health services, job training, and addiction recovery services. So making sure that we can expand on our community, but also evolve and be able to set up Oaklanders for success. Yes, and that's a lot out of time.
Hey, this is from Oakland United Coalition. Community has not completely felt part of the decision to sell the Coliseum. What plans do you have to ensure that real community engagement and involvement are part of the process of hearing and approving the development agreement, including any community benefits agreement? Mindy?
Well, community should fully be involved. And there should have been a dialogue between the community and the city council and the mayor's office and the, any other agency involved. First of all, the sale of the Coliseum to solve the budget was most, was a crazy idea. You should never tie a budget to a sale of an item like that. And as we can see with the problems of it, it's come up, the mayor herself changed the agreement. has come up, the mayor herself changed the agreement without even the city council. So there needs to be a completely, on this whole question, should be a reopening of it and a relooking. The community, there should be series of meetings and town meetings where people can come and actually be in dialogue to express and have work it through. And so I think there are many levels. This thing was very badly handled. I think that we have to relook at it and never let it happen again, because it won't solve the problems. Thank you. Rowena?
Yeah, so um I really appreciate this question. Um, as someone who was very rooted uh working on behalf of the East Oakland community, um, a lot of the, they echoed the same sentiments of not being involved in the process. And even uplifted the, the, the job displacement of those who are, were employed at the Coliseum. And so um, of course, top of mind for me would be en- engaging with all of the uh community um organizations neighborhood councils. Um, I think that there is a lot of um organization and a lot of community groups that are doing amazing work um in and around East Oakland. And so they would definitely have to be at the table and engaged. Um, and so that would be some work that I would definitely be wanting to follow up on. Uh, no matter what the future of the Coliseum is, as we know that uh the future does look bright and I hope, we hope that all works out. And so um we'll, I'll definitely work to ensure that community is at that table.
Charlene?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would echo in terms of the, the frustrations of just, they're wanting to be more transparent. Especially because this is such a valuable piece of public land. Um, I would recommend going forward that there be a community advisory board that's implemented. Really, there needs to be some governance, some democratic processes to really ensure that we um oversee the decision-making. And we know that not all community benefits agreements are created equal. I've seen community benefits agreements where they weren't truly inclusive. And so as we devise a community advisory board, it's really important for it to be inclusive, to include people from the faith community, the business communities um for sports of those who work in affordable housing, uh the nonprofit space. Um, and those who I would say also are just residents who live closest to the piece of land, since they are going to be affected by the uh development uh in that area. So, thank you. That's what I would recommend uh going forward.
Sean?
Yes, um, thanks for your patience with me in a little bit of transit. Yes, the community benefits agreements and community outreach are incredibly important. And I think one thing I wanna name is that historically, wealthier, wider homeowners have been horrifyingly overrepresented as part of the conversation. Renters have not had the voice. They have not had the bargaining power that they deserve. And frankly, it's structurally, um, so much of our public outreach process is stacked to benefit wealthier, wider homeowners who are, you know, able to oppose new housing largely from the privilege of having a home that's often assessed at much less than it is currently worth because of laws like Prop thirteen. Um, that won't happen under my uh council leadership. I will make sure that renters have a voice at the table. I'm in favor of expanding public comment to make sure that remote workers and folks are able to call in virtually. Um, removing those programs is a mistake and it's important to expand access to public outreach, make it holistic.
Tina?
So I grew up on sixty-second and East Fourteenth and the Coliseum was my Disneyland. And seeing the really bad negotiating that I've seen through the city council and the mayor. Um, we also, um, the Raiders still owe money. So they've been talking about the loan that is still left behind if they were to leave. And that's something that we need to implement. We need to make sure that the Raiders pay what they owe, that we try our best to con- continue to keep Oakland, um, um, the Coliseum open so that we don't lose out on these opportunities. Um, it's really nerve-wracking to see that some of the loan payments and some of the agreements have been kind of aligned with some of the, around our election time after our elections. And seeing that, um, you know, our mayor is up for recall, it makes me nervous to see what they have in store for us whether or not this election is lined up with it too.
Laurent?
Yes, this is a concerning uh deal. The Coliseum deal was concerning from the beginning. As someone that's been a part of the budget process many times, uh this budget alone was brought at the last minute to the council. And so as a council member, I would be someone that pushes for us to get uh our budget early so that we could have discussions about issues like this. Uh, I don't believe that selling parcels is uh the right way in order to fill a budget gap. You have to make tough decisions in order to make sure you balance the budget, because this is the result of that. Um, also, we understand that uh it wasn't a transparent process when it came down to the sale of the Coliseum. And I think uh that is something that is concerning. And now you hear council members obviously speaking out publicly about their questions around the deal. But what's critically important is that public services are going to be impacted if this deal doesn't go through. Uh, that our public safety, our police officers, firefighters will lose staff. And so I don't uh necessarily support the deal, but right now we're in a critical moment where we need this deal to fund in order to save services.
Okay. Please take one minute to share your closing statement. And we're gonna start with Rowena.
Well, thank you so much for organizing this forum. Um, you know, serving as a council member has a key legislative component and I have that experience. It also requires community connection. I've been working on behalf of Oaklanders for over a decade. And so once elected, um, I'm really looking forward to bringing new leadership, fresh innovative ideas in my experience working across all levels of government to really create transformative change here in the city of Oakland. Um, focused on results and accountability. And my experience partnering with others is really proven by the coalition of support. Um, being endorsed by the local Democratic Party, Assembly Member Bonta, Latifah Simon, our current council member at large Rebecca Kaplan, as well as S E I U ten to one. So this November um fifth, vote for new leadership and someone that has experience and will be effective working across all governmental agencies.
Charlene?
Hi, um, yeah, I just wanna echo Rowena's thanks in terms of for um standing up this forum around the specific topic of housing and uh really appreciate it. Um, I would say that we are living in unprecedented times here in Oakland in terms of both, not just the challenges we face um around public safety, around um housing insecurity, um, around the lack of job opportunities, just so many folks that live paycheck to paycheck and um are barely getting by. And yet at the same time, we have such limited resources with, with an immense budget deficit. And so I would say that what we really need during this time is people who are gonna be able to really look at our city structures, propose transformative reform, look at different ways of doing things. Um, that's what I can bring to the council. I've worked um in all kinds of uh city and federal governments. I can bring outside money. Um, and uh that's, I do my, I do my homework and um I've demonstrated that through the session. Thank you.
Sean? Sean, Danino?
Hello, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, great. Sorry, thanks for your patience. Um, yeah, housing is an issue we all have lived experience around and I'm so grateful for the work of EPO. Um, I got to review your public comments as part of the housing element review that I really saw Oakland, make Oakland a lot stronger and have much stronger tenant protections. Um, I'm here doing this work with you and I'm incredibly grateful for your work. Um, no candidate is taking the housing crisis more seriously. I come with lived experience around homelessness and a set of extremely concrete policies to protect renters, to expand access to homeownership to also to make sure that we're able to grow without displacing people. Um, you know, so much of the challenge with the new construction that we've seen is that we're not really able to see affordability come to the city of Oakland. And over the last few years, we haven't really seen abundance come either. Um, we really need to be prioritizing building housing and naturally affordable housing and housing that um is illegal to build under city zoning. So we can do a lot better. We'd benefit from a housing expert. Vote Sean Danino. Learn more at daninoperoakland.com.
Tina?
So once again, my name is Christina Tostado, like Tostadas, but with an O. And for me, um, growing up in East Oakland, being someone in the community, I see how hard the pandemic affected everyone. And I feel like mental health is number one priority for me. Um, I definitely feel like it'll align with homelessness. Um, if you get your mind right, um, it'll help you with getting a job. It'll help you with making sure that you're stable to be able to live out here in the Bay Area. It's expensive out here. And making sure that we support programs and services um for Oaklanders to thrive. We need to make sure that we can educate our, our community and support our community and bring in resources out here. And I'm one of the few people that are actually born and raised here and I'm willing to fight, just like you Fabian, Pastor Fabian, I know he left. But um, measure you is important. You know, there's eight hundred and fifty million dollars that were out.
Laurent?
Yes, uh, thank you uh for hosting tonight. Uh, Laurent Armstrong for city council member at large. Uh, I bring the most experience to the race as somebody that is prepared on day one to sit down and be able to address the issues facing Oakland. The issues around public safety, the issues around the budget concerns that even we talked about. But the ability to also work with organizations to get things done uh on the ground right now. And so I, I think it's critically important that there's somebody in this role as council member uh that has the experience to actually address Oakland issues and I've done that. I've built relationships across this city for the last uh fifty years that I've been here as not only somebody born and raised here, but somebody who has worked half their life for this city and actually been building relationships uh across this city. And I think right now in this moment, because of the crisis that we find ourselves in, we need someone that actually knows what they're doing. Somebody who brings the leadership experience that's needed in this moment and somebody that has already solved problems in the city and is prepared to solve additional problems right now. So thank you.
Mindy? Yes, hello. Um, I wanna close with a couple of words that there's no more free lunch for Wall Street in the city. And that is a big problem with what's happened to homelessness and housing, that you have these hedge fund and derivative investors, you know, taking out uh, you know, the real substance of the city. So as a city councilwoman at large, taking in every sector of and every part of the population, I come from a standpoint, every problem is solvable. But you need somebody who's not gonna be part of the game and is not gonna do, uh, is not going to take sides, but is strong enough to go in there and actually fight for the people of Oakland and ensure that we become a beautiful, productive city again, so that our children will have a future, that we can actually over years get rid of homelessness and hunger and have a beautiful Oakland where it will go from there for many, many, many generations. But it does take dealing tough with Wall Street. Thank you for having this forum. Okay, thank you everyone for joining us tonight.
Awesome. Thank you, Ronnie. Thank you to our candidates for district um at, at large. That was a very um comprehensive uh look at, at the different candidates. And um we thank you all for, for joining us. And we're gonna wrap up. So thank you candidates for at large. Goodbye. And uh as for um our audience here, thank you so much for joining us today. Um, wanna again plug that there are resources uh on the EPO website. Also want to say that uh you can check the League of Women Voters website for a lot of great information including on ranked choice vote, voting. And we thank you for joining us and don't forget to vote.